Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are here by direct to the call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 20th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our presentation this evening is Recognize Grand River Center for consecutive Stella Awards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Matt Kalsivich, Parks and Recreation Director. It is my great pleasure to take this opportunity to introduce the team and members of the Oakview Group and their recognition of this award. I only started to get to know them and their team, but I very quickly learned so much about the high quality of their service and their professionalism. And with that, I'd like to welcome General Manager Ryan Bonifas up to say a few words.
Good evening, Ryan Bonifas, Oakview Group, General Manager of the Grand River Center and Five Flags Civic Center. So yes, tonight, we appreciate you all recognizing our back-to-back award wins for the NorthStar Best Convention Center in the Midwest. NorthStar Meeting Groups is a major media, marketing, and information company that serves professionals who plan meetings, conferences, incentives, and other business events. So this is an institution that is recognized throughout our country. We're proud to beat a couple of our Oakview Group friends, but it was a great thing. And at the end of the day, it's the group of people back here and the rest of our staff that put us in this position.
Well, Ryan, congratulations. And you brought the whole team. That's great. Yeah, it's nice to...
Absolutely.
Most of the whole team, at least, I'm sure.
Yep.
Yeah, that team's pretty big. But that's fantastic. I mean, this is, you know, you've taken on a lot by coming in and working with the Grand River Center and then now working with Five Flags as well, and we really appreciate the work that you've done and to be recognized for it. I mean, we can tell that it's going very, very well. So thank you very much for what you're doing and congratulations on these awards.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. Okay with the group photo real quick?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
That's specifically you, the group. Yeah.
Shall we all?
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah.
Everybody call in.
Who's got the picture?
You need someone to take pictures from here.
Yes, exactly. Yep.
I can do another. We want a couple of pictures.
You know what? I can stand on the counter, right? I just am saying I can stand on the table.
We always put Karen in charge of this despite her warnings against doing so.
Stand behind Mr. Bonifas, Susan.
Ready your army first. Ready, one, two, three. Now here. Excellent. Thanks, guys. Thanks a lot for being here. Good for having me.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, so I believe we have Jamison, is it Reinecke, and Angela Heister here? If I got anything wrong in those names, please correct me. Heester, thank you very much for correcting me, Angela.
So yes, my name is Angela Heister and I'm Waypoint's domestic violence victim advocate for Dubuque and Delaware County. Waypoint would just like to thank Mayor Brad Kavanaugh and the City Council for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Waypoint has been serving victims and survivors of domestic violence in Dubuque since about Last year, Waypoint's domestic violence comprehensive program empowered about 2,270 survivors in eastern Iowa through advocacy, safety planning, and support. This is my fourth year accepting the proclamation, and each year, Waypoint has a stronger and stronger relationship with community agencies to provide the best service possible for this community, to work on prevention through collaboration. It's the most important thing. We support victims and survivors by providing resources to things like emergency housing, food, utilities, clothing, transportation to a safe place. We provide one-on-one counseling. We have a support group every Thursday that we're holding at the Multicultural Center from 1:00 to 2:00. We accompany victims to court proceedings regarding their abuse or to file a civil no-contact order to keep them safe from their abuser. We walk alongside them in their journey of recovery and to help them move forward. Thank you.
Angela, thank you for being here again this year, and thank you for bringing this forward every single year in the way that you've done. This is a really important issue to make sure that we're talking about as a community, and it's one of those that doesn't get talked about enough. Oftentimes, it's hidden and in sort of hushed tones, maybe discussed, but not openly in this way. So I do appreciate, and we appreciate, that you keep bringing this forward to make sure that we get this opportunity every year and to talk about it as a whole month of awareness in this way. So thanks for all that you do and for bringing this proclamation forward.
I appreciate it.
City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas one in three women and one in four men will experience some form of domestic violence during their lifetime, and whereas intimate partner violence impacts victims, children, family, friends, and the community at large; and whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but is experienced in all economic, racial, ethnic, educational, societal, and religious groups, and is sustained by social indifference; and whereas perpetrators of domestic violence should be held accountable for their actions, and victims should have access to support and services to help them overcome their experience; and whereas it is important to recognize the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide support to victims of intimate partner violence and work to increase public understanding of this significant problem; and whereas a coordinated effort from all community members is needed to put a stop to this heinous crime. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage residents to support Waypoint services in ending domestic violence, to join their Gentlemen Campaign on October 29th, and urge everyone to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Thank you very much. Let's give her a hand, everybody. Thank you.
Our second proclamation is Extra Mile Day.
All right, and Brittany Hayes is here to accept this proclamation. All the way from the back of the room.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the proclamation for Extra Mile Day. So Extra Mile Day is an opportunity for us as a community to celebrate everyone that goes above and beyond to make the world a better place. It also is an opportunity for us to recognize that every person has the ability to go the extra mile in some way, which can create positive change in ourselves, our families, and the community. And I pulled just a little bit of information to try to capture a small snapshot of what extra, like going the extra mile looks like in Dubuque. So, so far in 2025, we've had over 1,200 community members join our Volunteer DBQ platform. We've also had over 2,000 responses to volunteer opportunities that were posted on the website, so people really have an interest in getting involved. During April and May of this year, City of Dubuque employees participated in the Give Back Iowa Challenge. We did not place in the challenge, but in those two months, city employees logged over 1,700 volunteer hours. During the Dubuque Days of Caring event in April, there were over 1,300 volunteers that participated. They completed over 5,000 volunteer hours, which equaled over $188,000 in an economic impact to our organizations and our community as a whole. And then a couple weeks ago, Spartans Make a Difference Day happened. There were over 800 volunteers from the University of Dubuque. They completed over 2,000 volunteer hours that day, which equaled over $63,000 in economic impact. So we have a really great community here in Dubuque.
I love bringing the stats to this. This is, this is great, Brittany. Thank you so much for that. It's, it's great to be able to celebrate this every single year and talk about volunteerism in general and just the things that we do in this community, but I appreciate knowing just how that looks. So thank you very much for the work that you do to promote that and for bringing this proclamation forward again.
Thank you.
City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual residents collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service; and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which encourages its residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves, wholeheartedly, and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community; and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community; and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2025. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025, as Extra Mile Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, back to us then.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Next are boards and commissions. We have application review for the Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission.
Okay, we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2028 on this commission and one applicant, Gary Rudin. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to public hearings, please.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
Nope.
Thank you. All right, back to us then.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. There are five. First is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed assignment and assumption agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Franklin Investments LLC to Franklin Apartments LLC for November 3rd, 2025. Second is resolution setting a public hearing on a subordination agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Franklin Apartments LLC, and Premier Bank for November 3rd, 2025. Third is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed assignment of development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Franklin Investments LLC to Franklin Apartments LLC for November 3rd, 2025. Fourth is Ambassador Court Storm Sewer Replacement Project, initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for November 3rd, 2025. And fifth is setting a public hearing to approve a proposed amended and restated lease agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Peer Pressure Marine, Iowa Incorporated for November 3rd, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for November 3rd.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Next are boards and commissions. We have application review for the Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission.
Okay, we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2028 on this commission and one applicant, Gary Rudin. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
Okay. All right, then we can move on to public hearings, please.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Hitsler Rental LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Hitsler Rental LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Hitsler Rental LLC, owned by local developer Tim Hitsler, is in the process of acquiring property located at 2541 Central Avenue with the intent of redeveloping the property. Hitsler has successfully redeveloped several properties in the Dubuque area, including mixed-use property at 1902 Central. Hitsler is also a stakeholder in Key City Creative, a collaborative maker space located on the Central Avenue curve. Hitsler Rental LLC submitted an application for housing creation and the rehabilitation of the facade of 2541 Central Avenue. The property has been vacant and underutilized for many years. The applicant is proposing a $430,000 project that will create four new residential rental units, a micro retail space, and restore the building facade. The micro retail space will create an opportunity for local entrepreneurs and artisans to establish a visible, affordable presence in the neighborhood. The key elements of the development agreement include the following: Number one, the developer will make a capital investment of approximately $430,000 to rehabilitate the property. Number two, developer must create four residential rental units. Number three, developer will receive 15 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated not to exceed $40,000. Number four, city to award a downtown housing incentive grant in the amount of $40,000, which is $10,000 times four units. Number five, city to award a downtown rehabilitation grant not to exceed $35,000. Number six, City of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respect for the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. May I have a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Hitsler Rental LLC? Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anything virtually? Thank you. All right, back to us for any discussion then.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So this is a follow-up to our special session, the work session, where we have an owner-led rehab in an area of the city that really appreciates, I think, the infill that he is attempting to do mixed use as well, so there'll be residential and commercial. So the heartbeat continues in terms of being able not only to live in that area, but also to have work and play associated with. So I thank Tim very much, and also the next two items that we will be discussing with the same influence and appreciation for their work. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Farber. Yeah. Ms. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So Mr. Van Milligan mentions that the city awards a downtown housing incentive grant for $40,000, $10,000 per unit. What is the source of those funds?
The source of our funds for those downtown incentives programs is the Downtown Urban Renewal District, which we are allowed to capture taxes to provide incentives.
I see, so it's not a result of collecting taxes and spending it? It is, we capture that before we collect it? Is that how that, it's captured for this purpose rather than to be generally spent as all the other tax monies are?
Yeah, so instead of distributing the tax dollars to all the taxing bodies, including the City of Dubuque as one of those taxing bodies, creating an urban renewal district allows you to capture those tax revenues to reinvest them in the district.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? Well, you know, this is one of those areas of town where I've been spending a little bit of time lately and noticed that there really is a major gap on Central Avenue, right in this spot. And this, these types of smaller developments, and I'll agree with Ms. Farber in her earlier comments, that the next couple of items are also talking about some smaller developments, but there's been, I would say, an increasing momentum around the discussion about smaller developments, and in many ways, thanks to our Economic Development Department and other collaborators that are talking about that. But I think this is a perfect example of it. You've got commercial space right in a place where it's really necessary. You've got more housing, and we need more housing, as we just learned, again, all over town. But it's great to see a building that has just been sort of sitting there. And, you know, when you think of an eyesore, this is a perfect example of an eyesore of a building. I think this is a great opportunity for, for development here. So I really thank Mr. Hitsler for, for stepping up on this one. All right. No further comments here. So motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, just call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and 1248 Iowa Street LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and 1248 Iowa Street LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. 1248 Iowa Street LLC is managed by Josh Jansen. Jansen successfully redeveloped 1047 Bluff Street, creating new rental units and a historic tax credit redevelopment of the building exterior. Jansen is also involved with the ongoing revitalization project at 1602 Central Avenue, which is on track to be substantially completed January of 2026. 1248 Iowa Street LLC submitted an application for housing creation and the rehabilitation of facade of 1236 to 1248 Iowa Street. 1248 Iowa Street LLC is proposing a $2.7 million project that will create 13 new residential units, sorry, residential rental units and restore the building facade. Typically, a project is only eligible for one $35,000 downtown rehabilitation grant. However, since the project spans two tax parcels, staff have reviewed the grant program policy and recommend awarding two $35,000 downtown rehabilitation grants. The key elements of the development agreement include the following: Number one, developer will make a capital investment of approximately $2.7 million to rehabilitate the property. Number two, developer must create 13 residential rental units. Number three, developer will receive 15 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $150,000. Number four, city to award a downtown housing incentive grant in an amount of $130,000, which is $10,000 times 13 units. Number five, city to award a downtown rehabilitation grant not to exceed $35,000 for 1236 Iowa Street. Number six, city to award a downtown rehabilitation grant not to exceed $35,000 for 1248 Iowa Street. Number seven, City of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respect for the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and 1248 Iowa Street LLC. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Okay. Back to us then for discussion. Ms. Resnick.
Thank you. Mr. Van Milligan, could you explain the difference to our citizens, our residents? Premier Bank is, is going to be getting the first secured position, and we're giving that up, and we are subordinating our position to second position. Is that correct? What are the implications of that? I read that Premier Bank, as, as a condition for this loan requires a first secured position. Are, is the City of Dubuque and the taxpayer funds still safe and secure as a second position?
Yes, I'm actually going to ask Economic Development Director Jill Connors or City Attorney Karen Brumwell to address that question.
I can take a first pass at it while Jill comes up. It is not unusual for a lender to want to be in first position, as we would be considered the minority lender or the minority lien holder in this scenario. Typically, when you look at that, you look at the value of the building and you look at the ratio of the debt to the value, and then you look at the pro forma, that's the word I was looking for, to determine that the revenue that will be generated can meet all of the obligations and things like that. So that would be standard in any types of arrangement of this sort and would come through both Economic Development and my office.
Anything more than?
I don't know that I have anything to add, except that that's, we typically subordinate to loans in this type of project. uh, to loans in this type of project.
So we, so we take that first secured position intending and hoping to give that up to a, a primary lender who will take over the financing? Is that true? Is that?
Karen is nodding, I guess I'm not quite following your question.
So, so, um, not, not always. It depends on whether additional financing is, is needed for projects. So there are some projects, um, that may be smaller in nature where we are, in fact, the first creditor. Um, it just depends on the capital stack that's necessary for each particular project.
Okay, so thank you. Have you, uh, again, I'm just looking out for, uh, citizens of Dubuque, their, their, uh, their funding. So have we had a, an instance where we have, uh, lost out on, um, any kind of financing that, uh, when things are sold, or if it, the project doesn't really take place? Are we really giving up any kind of security here just by placing them first because they have the major amount of money invested?
Well, I mean, there's always a risk, um, involved, but that's a calculated risk of when we look at the different projects.
Do you remember, do you know of any that we?
And I think of one offhand.
Have been burned?
Not, not specific to economic development, but we've had situations arise related to, um, housing projects. What happens if we think someone, um, if, if they default on a first mortgage? We have the opportunity to buy that lender out, um, depending on the amount that is due to them. And there have been one or two instances where we have done that to protect our lien, to take possession of the property, and then in turn, actually, to do further rehab and sell it to an income-qualified homeowner. So we look at our options if that situation presents itself.
Thank you. So there, I just wanted to point out that there's a lot going on with every one of these agreements that you've gone through. Uh, you found out whether or not this is a, a good deal for our, our citizens, our, our residents here, and then gone forward with this. And, uh, would it be safe to say that every development agreement that we have come up through your office goes through this process of, of determining, uh, whether it's a good risk for our citizens?
Well, there's not a lot of the, um, most of what comes out of our office are grants, um, not loans. And so we follow the protocols that were put into place in September of 2022 by the city council, when we looked at the, the list of, I'll call it the menu of housing incentives. And so that's what we follow, and we go through that, anything that's, uh, any project which is eligible for the different types of incentives, then those incentives are applied equally.
I appreciate the good information. Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? Like, this is another great project for another building that really needs some love. And this one's a little bit different. It's in a very prominent spot, sitting right next to City Hall, um, right there where the farmer's market is centralized. I think it's a, a great opportunity to be able to revitalize this. And I just wanted to point out that, um, I, I for one am happy that we've decided to do, to double up on the, uh, downtown rehabilitation grant in this case. I think it does make a lot of sense, and I'm glad that the rules allow that, um, to be able to do that for a building that actually spans two different parcels. So I'm glad we're, we're doing it in this way. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Ned Oberbrockling, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque and Ned Oberbrockling, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. The property at 372 Main Street is one of the last buildings on Lower Main to be revitalized. The building has been vacant for some time and has begun deteriorating. Ned Oberbrockling, the owner of 372 Main Street, previously worked with the city to restore 253 Main Street, including the creation of new housing units and restoration of the building's exterior. Ned Oberbrockling submitted an application for housing creation and the rehabilitation of the facade at 372 Main Street. The applicant is proposing a $600,000 project that will create two new residential rental units. That's, that, where it says four, there is not correct, it's two new residential units, rehabilitate the first floor commercial space, and restore the building facade. The key elements of the development agreement include the following. Number one, developer will make a capital investment of approximately $600,000 to rehabilitate the property. Number two, developer must create two residential rental units. Number three, developer will receive 15 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $50,000. Number four, city to award a downtown housing incentive grant in the amount of $20,000, which is $10,000 times two units. Number five, city to award a downtown rehabilitation grant not to exceed $35,000. Number six, city Dubuque will amend the greater downtown urban renewal district plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving the Iowa, I'm sorry, wrong thing. City council adopt a resolution approving a development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Ned Oberbrockling. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you both. All right, back to us then for any discussion. Ms. Russell.
I just think it's impressive to see how these grants leverage so much private investment in our downtown. It's, it's really great to see all the investment that's going in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
I've been pretty quiet, but, uh, three in a row outstanding projects. Um, they're not huge, but, uh, they're going to be huge for the neighborhoods that rent, so glad they're there.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick?
Yes, just, uh, uh, to back up what Ms. Russell mentioned is about private investment. It, it mentions in our memo that there is no budget impact for the city, uh, to consent this, this agreement. So, uh, it's not costing our citizens, our residents, anything to have this kind of investment and activity, uh, going on. And I agree with her, and Mr. Jones said this is a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Interesting that some blocks have one final piece of the puzzle, and this seems to be that piece in this particular block of Main Street. So looking forward to approving this one. All right, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is Comiskey Park Environmental Covenant.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Senior Council Barry Lindahl advises the cleanup of city-owned property at Comiskey Park is complete, and the city is now at the environmental covenant phase as requested by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. The soil does not require a covenant, however, the groundwater beneath the city property remains contaminated from adjacent property. The proposed environmental covenant imposes limitations on the use of the property. One, no drinking water or non-drinking water well shall be installed within the property boundaries. Number two, no subsurface work will be completed below, two feet below ground surface without notification of the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and submission and acceptance of a soil and groundwater management plan. The environmental covenant places other restrictions and conditions on the property. Senior Council Barry Lindahl is recommending adoption of the resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully recommend mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving the Iowa Land Recycling Program Environmental Covenant with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for Comiskey Park. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, back to us. Um, Mike, I'll open with a question. This, to me, seems like a pretty common, and maybe this is for credit too, but seems like a, a pretty common thing that occurs when we know that there's been contamination somewhere, and we've done some work there, and there's environmental cleanup that's taken place, and now we have to look forward and make sure that we don't disturb anything in a way that could cause more contamination that'd be dangerous to people. Is that pretty?
Yes, you're, you're correct. This, this, uh, land was part of the Iowa Land Recycling Program through the DNR, which is very common, and this is just one of the steps of the process when you get to the point where the DNR says, okay, yep, you've done all the things we need you to do as part of the land recycling program. Now we need to get the covenant in place so everybody knows moving forward what our obligations are, notification responsibilities to the DNR, that type of thing.
And the general idea here is that so long as we don't do the two things that are listed there, like try to create a drinking well in this spot, or dig without letting the Iowa DNR know about it, as long as we don't do those things, the land is safe for people to enjoy and, and play on and do those things.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I would just add a couple of things about this being common. Uh, there's probably dozens of properties across the city that have, uh, these kinds of covenants, environmental covenants on them. Most of them are not owned by the city of Dubuque. They, so this, this is a program available to a private property owner, too. Um, the other thing is the, uh, contamination that exists in the water under Comiskey Park was not created by the city of Dubuque, it was created by a private, a party, an adjoining private party.
Thanks, Mike, for pointing that out. Okay. Other question? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So when it says the groundwater, uh, how, how far below the ground or i- is the groundwater? Is it like 10,000 feet, a hundred feet? Uh, does it vary up and down between two feet and 50 feet? Do we know what, where is the groundwater underneath there? How deep is it?
Yeah, I don't think I know that answer, but, um, I, I do know that at least from the perspective of the DNR, um, if we do any, uh, disturbance of soils two feet below the ground surface, we have to have a, a remediation plan. But that doesn't mean the water is two feet below. It, but I don't know. It's probably fairly deep, quite frankly.
Sure. And is the groundwater, the contaminated groundwater, does that, is that, uh, isolated to the point where it doesn't get into our aquifers that we use for drinking water? Is that it?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure it's not that deep.
Not that deep.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the Jordan Aquifer is, is very deep, and it is very clean. So I think there's no concern about that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any others? Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is fiscal year 2026 First Budget Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson is recommending approval of the first fiscal year 2026 budget amendment, gemends the fiscal year 2026 budget for city council actions since the beginning of the fiscal year, and includes items which city council has expressed support for. Second, the amendment includes fiscal year 2025 budget carryovers to fiscal year 2026 of encumbrances totaling $74,48,640, capital projects totaling $99,461,931 that were not completed during the prior fiscal year, and associated revenues totaling $84,855,153. There are operating budget appropriation carryovers of $5,092,587, and operating receivables of $3,539,873. Also, total transfers between funds of $9,899,599 are reflected. The capital budget amendment totals an increase of $6,978,396, with an increase in associated revenue of $9,669,498. Amongst other things, the capital budget amendment adds city council priority projects. Eagle Point Park Chyris Pavilion renovation, $40,000, in addition to the existing budget that, of $57,000. Resurfaced tennis courts at Eagle Point Park, Flora Park, and Murphy Park for $606,000. Madison Park play equipment for $108,200. Murphy Park play equipment for $96,571. Gate Park play equipment for $176,794. Jefferson Park play equipment for $230,000. Eagle Point Park veranda room roof replacement for $51,000. Eagle Point Park Historic Structures Review for $40,000. Eagle Point Park Terrace Room Roof Replacement for $40,000. Eagle Point Park Tree Trimming and Bluff Clearing for $150,000. And Public Works Building Improvements and Asphalt Paver Replacement for $1,532,230. The operating budget amendment totals an increase of $3,837,661, with a decrease in associated revenue of $220,379. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the first fiscal year 2026 budget amendment, which amends the fiscal year 2026 budget for the city council actions since the beginning of the fiscal year, and includes items which city council has expressed support for. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually? Thank you. All right, back to us then for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
I'll just say that this is both a big deal and an extremely, uh, routine deal. Um, this is what allows, uh, the city to work. Um, all the funds appropriated to a project that can't be completed in a fiscal year, after all over to the next fiscal year, the project dies. So it's just a, a method of, of, uh, maintaining transparency, maintaining, uh, the balanced budget that we must have, and assuring that, uh, that we're making progress on, on all the things that we're, we're not leaving things unfinished that we started, and that we're completing our contracts. Plus, things come to the council and come to the city's attention outside of the budget process that have to be done. Sometimes to repair things, sometimes there, there are maintenance things. But this allows us, uh, a couple times a year to just adjust, shuffle the, the funds back to, to new places where they need to be, and to, to legitimize, uh, the reality of the times. So, of course, I support this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Just a, a quick question, Mike. Um, so the, many, many projects that are ongoing, especially for the park refresh, um, a lot of them may start this year, but most of them will be started or completed next year? Is that the correct timing on these?
Yeah, that's correct. It's getting kind of late in the season to get some of them done this year, so, and, uh, several of them require, uh, require community input, so when we put new equipment in a park, we do an, uh, community engagement of the neighborhood to find out what kind of equipment they want before we put it in.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the timing. It's not all going to happen now. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's probably going to snow a little bit before, too long. Sorry. I mean, just, just true. Ms. Wethel?
I just wanted to, um, share my appreciation. The, the staff memo goes into the details of the capital budget carryover amendment, um, very specifically. I wish that we didn't have to carry over the 14th Street Overpass for $9.9 million, but we do. And so it's not as though these are projects we don't want to do. They're projects that for some reason or another are in a process in which they cannot be done within the fiscal year as allocated, um, and for various other reasons. So I just want folks to know, it's not as though projects have been abandoned or neglected. These are projects that we hoped to move forward, and for one reason or another, um, they have not yet, but it doesn't mean they won't in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would just add to that. So that specific project, the 14th Street Overpass, so it's an over $40 million project, but $25 million of those are federal funds, and so they require us to do certain steps before we can actually start construction. One of the big steps is an environmental review, which takes a significant amount of time. So, yeah, we're, we're at the mercy of the federal schedule upon accepting the federal money, which courses more than 50% of the project, so.
Thanks for the clarification, Mike. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So my question is about the play areas. Um, of course, they're great for physical exercise, creativity, and pretending, uh, all these adventure games when, when we go by, we watch the kids playing. My question is, um, based on some, sometimes, uh, residents say, well, these play areas, uh, they're just going to be wrecked and vandalized. So I guess my question is, what is the reason that they are being, uh, is it replaced for several of these parks, or they're brand-new play areas? And then if they're being replaced, why are they being replaced? Are they being vandalized, or are these play areas, uh, worn out? I guess I'm, I'm looking to get a, get an answer for, uh, some questions.
Yeah, so our, our experience is vandalism is not a big problem, uh, but wear and tear is over time, and I think some of these play, uh, equipments are up to maybe 20 years old. I know Matt's, yeah, Matt's, uh, Kalsovich is in the audience, the park and rec director, and shaking his head yes. So, you know, we maintain them very well, they last a very long time, but they don't last forever. And not only don't they last forever, but also people's, you know, taste in what they would like to see in their neighborhood changes. And so it's nice when they, uh, reach their useful life and we replace them, and we engage the neighborhood in a conversation, and we can replace them with whatever they would like to see there at the current time.
And, and there's been a, been a big improvement in these play areas over the last 20, 50 years. I remember burning my legs on, on these metal slides that were set in the sun, and that we don't do that anymore, which is great. And, and, and frankly, some dangerous materials, uh, uh, play areas that were out there when I was a kid. And frankly, some dangerous materials, play areas that were out there when I was a kid. So I know that there's a big improvement for safety, and yet we want them to have fun. And so another good reason for updating these play areas. So thank you very much for that information.
Well, I would mention along that is the safety surface underneath the play areas. So, you know, it used to be just dirt, and then it switched to wood chips because if somebody fell off, some child fell off, it might help break their fall. But we all know what happens with wood chips. They compact and they deteriorate. And so now we put in a rubberized surface, so it tremendously improves the safety for some young child who, guess what? Kids fall off of this stuff, you know, they're playing and having fun. But the other thing is, and I've forgotten the number, but in the last 25 years, the mayor and city council probably has approved, oh, 25 new parks? So it's not only replacing equipment in old parks, but it's creating new parks. And I think we've had ribbon cuttings just this year on three new parks. And I think there's a couple of these are brand-new parks. So, yeah, so you're not only replacing, but you're enhancing the neighborhood access to parks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to point out, they're not all the same. And I think it's kind of cool that this park doesn't look like that park, and this is a whole different adventure if you go to another park for an afternoon than the one in your backyard. So I think that's just really neat that we do it that way.
All right. And I'll just close by pointing out that this discussion actually started last week when we approved several of these projects in advance of the knowledge that this was going to be a public hearing that we actually set at the last meeting. So I'm glad that we are at this point and able to move forward. All right, motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, you call the roll, please.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? Seeing and hearing none so far. Okay. Going once, going twice. We have some public input. There we go. Right at the end.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. My name's David Barba. I live at 208 Bluff Street, and I'm the executive director of Dubuque Main Street. And I just had some interesting things I wanted to share as we were getting to annual report season. It's been an amazing year for Dubuque Main Street. We have seen attendance increases in nearly all of our events. The Dubuque Farmers Market, we deployed 42 additional picnic tables, high tops, benches. And then we saw the great return of our audience at Dubuque and All That Jazz, our yearly summer concert. But something I thought that was really interesting, and I just wanted to include here as well, something I'm most proud of as a new executive director for Dubuque Main Street, we have actually increased our fiscal efficiency quite a lot this year. We have reduced our expenses by over $100,000, which is about 20% of our budget. So I know on this topic of transparency and fiscal responsibility with taxpayer dollars, Dubuque Main Street has made extreme considerable improvements in how we use those tax dollars. So I just want to thank you all, and we're entering what I feel is a great phase of growth for Dubuque Main Street, and we're proud to have the city be our partners in that. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your comments.
Of course.
Mr. Mayor, David, before you said, you got something going on Thursday you want to tell people about?
Yes, of course. So our annual dinner, where I'd love to get you go all through the details of this document this Thursday at the Hotel Julian at 5:30 is the State of Maine Awards. We'll be honoring 10 great small business owners, small developers who've done great things for downtown, and you'll hear about all that Dubuque Main Street's done in 2025. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for that addition, David. Any other public input this evening? All right, seeing none, anything virtually?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Grand River Center presentation of fiscal year 2025 annual report.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and listen to the presentation.
Second. Ms. Russell, second by Resnick. I will turn it over for the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. It's my honor again to bring up the team from the Oak View Group. We had recognition, obviously, earlier about the quality of their service. This information really speaks to the quantity and scope of how they provide to the city. So again, introduce General Manager Ryan Bonifess to provide information.
Well, good evening again. It's fun to be up here twice with y'all today. Again, Ryan Bonifess, General Manager, Oak View Group, oversight of Grand River Center and Five Flags Civic Center, and I want to thank y'all for this opportunity to speak with y'all again tonight. Oak View Group's been in market for a little over two and a half years now. We started in April of 2023, and we're proud to be here. My family and I have been here for two years. It's been a great experience for us, and we've just overall had a great time here at Oak View Group here. Before I get too deep into anything, I certainly want to take the time to acknowledge Marie Ware, everything that she's done for us, helping us take on the Grand River Center and to start off the Five Flags Center. We certainly wouldn't be here without Marie. Certainly also excited to work with Matt. We've been able to meet with him a few times and ready to get into the trenches with him. But before I get into anything, I always like to start this with just thanking y'all for taking the people in this chamber years ago, taking the time to really put the time and effort into building that beautiful convention center on the Mississippi River. That convention center could have been anywhere in this town, could have been just like every other convention center we see throughout the country. And the city of Dubuque, I know Mike was still there, was here at that time, certainly spent that extra time. And it's really cool to me to have, you know, the building that's 22 years old and that river room overlooking the Mississippi River with the Illinois River there. That is, you know, you know you're in Dubuque when you see that picture, and that's really cool to be able to do something only 20 years in. We talked a lot about last year with effort and care, and that's to continue the same road we're talking about this year. One of my key marks last year were bathrooms. I know, you know, it was something that we talked about, and that's where we start with effort and care, just the same as last year. You can tell a lot about any kind of establishment you walk into by just walking straight into their bathrooms. We work through our back of house and cleanliness, making sure our part-time staff have a good environment for them to continue and provide good experiences for our guests. You know, we had the awards, and we're excited about those, but we also had the reviews and the surveys to back that up. Last year, our cleanliness record, our cleanliness was rated 9.2 out of 10. This year, we came in at 9.4 out of 10. Our courtesy of staff was at 9.2. This year, we're at 9.29 out of 10. Parking, 9.2. This year was 9.29, so we're doing better at parking, apparently. Quality of food, which is a big item for us at the convention center, you know, people come in, and I think all of y'all have been to a conference throughout the country, and it's just status quo. Hopefully, you have something that's a little edible. Our chef, Chef Ray, and our executive sous chef, Cassie McCarthy, has done a great job. Last year, we came in at 8.2. This year was 8.76 out of 10, so upwards and onwards. We also asked them, how did you feel about before you came into the convention center? How do you think your rating was going to be? 8.2 out of 10 last year. This year was 8.4. Client rating after the event, 8.5 last year, 9 this year, 9 out of 10. And then their overall rating last year was at 8.6 out of 10, and this year is at a 9. So we're certainly making strides going up in everything we're doing with that personal element and that guest experience. Accomplishments and awards that we've been able to take on this past year. We're proud to be a sensory-inclusive venue through Culture City. All of our frontline staff, our admin staff, and our back of house goes through training with Culture City, and we provide resources for those that are needed, noise-canceling headphones, fidget tools, weighted lap blankets. So we try to provide experiences, you know, try to provide good experiences for everyone in our building. Sustainability is also a big item for us. We moved all of our plastic straws out, have agave straws now. Last year, we did the project for our micro garden, and this past year, we did the same thing. We were able to get a grant through Dubuque, sustainable grants, and we have an onsite garden on Fifth Street. Same thing we did last year with one of our great partners, Corinne Schreiber, with Reevolution Foods, and the Waller High School students came together. They posed a few options for us. We went with that. It's right on Fifth Street. I can see it out my window. Dubukers may or may not be taking tomatoes off our vines. I can't tell you which one, but that's something that may be happening. Last fiscal, we diverted 2,135 pounds of food from the landfill and composted those. We donated over 400 pounds of food to the Mission and the Teresa House. And then our operations manager, Joe Klecker, was recognized for Travel Dubuque Hospitality Breakfast as the 2025 Outstanding Frontline Staff Award recipient of the Year. And if any of y'all that met Joe through passing, he is just one of the most lovable guys, can-do spirit that you could ever meet. And all of those accumulations of the surveys, reviews, the care and effort that we put in helped us win last year's North Star Award for the Best Convention Center in the Midwest. And we're proud of that award, and we're proud to be here tonight showcasing the second year in a row. But a lot of that is still with our partners, with Travel Dubuque and the city of Dubuque, amongst others. Economic impact is the main reason, one of the main reasons, that convention centers are brought into communities. Julie is here today. She, a couple months ago, she provided us with the numbers for our economic impact this year, and it was at $7,105,695 for economic impact for the convention center. And how do you get to those numbers? One example, the Iowa Rural Water Conference, we held them about a week or two ago, and last year, that event brought in $252,000 in economic impact. Special Olympics brings in $183,000 last year. Tyson Supply Vendors Conference is $214,000. And we're especially proud of our sales team. We made a valiant effort to go after sporting events last year. Some of the events we brought in for the economic impact last year, $117,000 for One Beat Dance. Midwest Stars was $72,000. One of the events I talked about to y'all last year was the Vet Volleyball Tournament. That event started just at the Grand River Center. The client was hopeful that he could get about 70 teams there. Grand River Center became too small, brought on Five Flags Center. Grand River Center and Five Flags Center became too small. The event spilled over to UW-Plattville. That event brought in $1.2 million of economic impact over a weekend in February. Super proud of that event. That event's coming in twice this year, in February and April. I know one of them that we're looking a little more regional, but great event that we've been able to host. Julie and Travel Dubuque have been a great component of that event as well, and we're looking forward to bringing Andy and his team back into market this year. We've done, last year, we did five dance events. This year, we have 10 coming. We're staying strong with MMA and wrestling, the three of those. Bill Carpenter does his UPA powerlifting events at our venue, does four of those. And then we're actually having two cheerleading competitions this year. Not sure if that's happened at the convention center before, but we're excited to bring in another new group of people that are, come join and look at our city. Accomplished this with 168 events held with 42,754 attendees. And then community engagement's really important to us and volunteering. Just as we did last year, we go out, it's great, and we love hosting these events, these galas, these banquets for these nonprofits. But we also want to get out in the public and do those volunteer work that we, and be a part of the community. We've done stuff with Habitat Restore, Dubuque Days of Caring, National Mississippi River Museum, and other events. We ended up outside with, working in our community over 17 times last year. Our marketing and social media team is a lot of fun. You always got to, when you see Kyla looking around with her phone, you got to engage or get out. So she'll get you on those TikTok reels. We ran a, I thought it was a pretty funny April Fool's joke last year, that we were going to convert the river room into a Chili's. So, you know, and then I hear that they're getting rid of their queso dips, so I don't even know if I want Chili's anymore. That's great. But, you know, we really feel like it's important to showcase our staff and showcase their personalities and engage them because they're just not the people that are cooking your food or serving it. It's, you know, these people have their favorite things that they do in Dubuque. Why fall is important to them. Where do they like to go on hiking trails? And we're looking forward and excited to our collaboration with Five Flags. Multiple of our colleagues here work at both. We have some that are just at Five Flags and some that are just at Grand River Center. And we're trying to work through, how do we merge these together more often? One example, during the January 24th weekend, we're hosting an mayor cheer over at the Grand River Center, and we're also going to do a Taylor Swift tribute band at the Five Flags Center or the theater, trying to get the market for Dubuque, but also we know we have this built-in group of cheerleaders here that, you know, may like that Taylor Swift weekend. And we're also trying to just build on what we've accomplished at the Grand River Center, you know, and working with our, continuously working with our great directors and staff. Do you want to do a Five Flags plug in the middle of this? We are doing a ribbon cutting this Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 with the ribbon cutting at 4:30. This is in conjunction with the Dubuque Chamber of Commerce. We're going to hold this on the stage at the theater. Everyone knows that view from your seats to the theater. I will tell you, that, flip that around, that view into our theater is gorgeous. So we're happy, you know, hopefully everyone here can make that and be a part of that activity. We'll have staff from Grand River Center and Five Flags. We're excited for everyone to meet y'all. But overall, we're just building on the team with both venues. As I shared last year, we have a crushing committee. I know, Mayor, you really enjoyed that one. You know, getting together, doing movie days, we're doing a ghost tour of the theater. Is there ghosts in the theater, Tom? Yep, so we're going to learn about, we're going to learn about ghosts here coming up. We did a Mario Kart challenge where everyone came in, and you got to choose your Mario Kart racer, and we celebrate accomplishments and birthdays. But overall, I'm here to celebrate our great team. None of this would be possible without them. We're still continuing to try to push that envelope as hard as we can for Dubuque and all of our Dubukers, bring in events and then provide entertainment. We're proud to represent and be a part of our community.
Ryan, thank you. That was excellent. My favorite part of the presentation, though, was when you turned around and said, are there ghosts in the theater? And every single person shaking their head yes, pretty emphatically, actually, so might never look at the theater the same way again. Well, questions? Discussion? Ms. Wethel.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. Thanks for your team, and thanks for lifting up your team. You always do a great job of that. I am interested to know your perspective. Right now, our goal is to really focus on tourism, I think, as a community and with our partners and Travel Dubuque and so many other organizations, Main Street, you know, we're really trying to drive home the experience of what Dubuque is. We have discussed a great deal hotels here in our city, and I would just like you to speak if you'd feel comfortable with your perspective on our needs and your wants and what you feel our community would benefit from.
Yeah, you know, hotels, for what we do, are needed. You know, Travel Dubuque and the Field of Dreams does a great job bringing in all the baseball teams this summer, but it's really hard for us to book events during the summer. Hotel rates spike during the summer, and we have zero control over those. So with that, we do lose business because of the hotels or lack thereof. You know, I can't sit here and speak for the community as a whole, but I know for what we do on a day-to-day basis, absolutely, more hotel rooms would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
If you go to the theater ribbon cutting this week, you'll learn about a ghost light.
Yep.
Which is a light on a stick that's on the stage when all the other lights are out, just to give the ghost something to do and keep the crew from falling down when they're looking for the stick for the other lights.
True. We'll probably have a social media post on that in the future.
That was it? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
That was important.
No, it was extremely important. I didn't mean to say it wasn't. Yes, please, Mr. Resnick.
So I've been at the Grand River Center for many different things, as a member of the city council, an event goer, and a guy who's trying to set up the band, and I need an extension cord. And all the time you've been very, your staff has been great helping us out in all different ways. So kudos to you and your staff. My question is, have they, has there been a plan to address the escalator issue?
We are working with Matt and his team on next steps for that.
Okay, so it's in process.
It is.
I noticed that there's, somebody mentioned that there are not a lot of people, a lot of companies that work on escalators or who do that. So when I go to other cities now, I look at the escalator brand, and it happens to be the same one as we have. And when you have such a big market and, you know, an escalator repair in New York is going to be a lot of money, but we can't, you know, we don't do that kind of, you know, big-money stuff here in Dubuque. So I appreciate that it is a process, and you anticipate a happy ending on this?
We're working with Matt and his team on options. You know, the bare root of it is the venue is built on a landfill, right? So there's been lots of shifting and moving, and we want to make sure that what we do moving forward is correct for taxpayers on that. And it is not cheap to bring a repairman in from Cedar Rapids. Every time we do that, it's a healthy chunk of money.
I appreciate that perspective, so thank you very much. Has the elevator been getting a lot more use, and how does that work?
You know, I'm assuming it does. I'm certainly not bird-dogging the elevator. You know, I know that the escalator is certainly helpful and... You know, I, I know that the escalator is certainly helpful and, outside of when we've had a few large conferences, I know it's kind of troublesome for people that want quick access, but outside of when we had Iowa Credit Union, that staircase got a little too tight. But outside of that, I don't think we've had too many concerns. But this is something that we certainly want to get resolved sooner than later. It's just a matter of timing and making the correct decision.
Thank you. And it just points out that, that there's a myriad of issues that you, you know, you have these great events and things that happen, and then there's just the nuts and bolts of running such a wonderful facility, but it all needs to be looked after and, and, so I appreciate the good work you're going through, especially on what we need down there as far as moving people and also the, the need for, be smart about how we spend our funds. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Well, just a couple of things. First, the ratings. I mean, where do you go from nines? You know, that's, it's tough to keep maintaining that, but that's fantastic. Congratulations on that. I mean, that's, that is really good to see that, that people are that happy. And that is the impression that I get when I talk to people about the Grand River Center currently. The impression is that people do enjoy it there. When you have bad food and, you know, a bad experience at a conference or any sort of event at a convention center, you absolutely hear about it.
Absolutely.
And we've been to those places, we've had those experiences. And what I don't hear a whole lot of is that coming from people who are currently experiencing the Grand River Center. So I think that's really good news. That's fantastic. And I'm, I'm excited to hear about the more projects that you have coming and the volleyball and cheer items that you have coming. Those are, those are great additions. I really want to key back in on what Ms. Wethel was asking about with hotel rooms. This is, this is interesting because we have great success with Travel Dubuque and Field of Dreams, and we're all very proud of it, and we're all incredibly, 1,000% supportive of these projects. But it fills the hotel rooms in the summertime, doesn't it? I mean, that's, it absolutely makes it difficult, as you said, to book things. And so then that leaves you with a, a shorter season in the months that aren't as friendly to be able to book those kinds of things. And we have to travel to hotel rooms to be able to, for too many hotel rooms. We have hotel attached.
Sure.
But, which also continues to need upgrades and improvements. But we really do need this in Dubuque, don't we?
It'd certainly be helpful for us. You know, we try to pivot in the summer and we fill, we call it filler business, right? So it's weddings, you know, the stuff like that, that is a little bit easier, and we don't have to worry about where they're staying, you know? So that's kind of our objective when it comes to summertime. But yes, I mean, as you know, we do have some challenges with the hotel that we're attached to. We've had, you know, a lack of hotels in our vicinity. But, you know, we're doing with what we, what we can, the best with what we're provided.
Yeah. I appreciate that insight. And, you know, it is a discussion that we've had as a City Council multiple times and obviously approved some projects to get them moving forward. But I do think, you know, for us, this is, I think, a really important part of that discussion, is that we have a city-run facility too, in fact, that, that really need hotel space to be able to have the functionality that they really, that they really need to have. And you can't have as much economic benefit, you can't have as much attention and tourism and, you know, even, even weddings and things that people, that residents here want. You can't invite your, your large family from far distances if you can't have a place to house them, because we, we know that everybody can't have them living in their own homes while they're here for the wedding. So I think it's a really important discussion. I think it's sort of the next frontier as we talk about some of these other major projects. You know, we just had the Envision 2030 unveiling last week, and one of the things that caught my eye was the South Port, and that being something that people really want to see now. And in some ways, that's, that's great, but we also, I think, all know that we need to continue to finish what we've got in the North Port and continue to build out our ability to have people come and visit us, because we just don't have it right now. We, we don't have it in the way that we really need it. And we've got a situation, I was mentioning chicken and egg earlier in the conversation with another item on the agenda, but this idea of, we've got all the events happening, but we're sort of behind when it comes to having places for people to stay. So unfortunately, they're staying in other places, nice places, Galena and, you know, outside of Dubuque and Dubuque County, but sometimes really far away. Sometimes places like Cedar Rapids, to be able to come to some of these events in Dubuque. We don't want that. We definitely want something where we have people staying here for the things that are occurring at your facility.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much, Ryan. We really appreciate this time.
Appreciate y'all's time.
All right. And I should also say thank you to all your entire staff for being here and for the work that you do every single day. We, we do sincerely appreciate it, so know that. All right. Well, motion here, Mr. Receive and File, hear that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is approving a contract with Dubuque Main Street, providing funds for its swap grant program.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending approval to utilize funds previously approved by the City Council for downtown redevelopment purposes to provide funding for Dubuque Main Street's downtown swap grant program, including administrative costs. As part of the fiscal year 2025 budget, the City Council approved the capital improvement project incremental development and small business storefront establishing coaching in the amount of $150,000. The purpose was to support downtown storefront redevelopment in order to promote the success of small businesses, building owners, and the vitality of downtown. The city has already contracted with Neighborhood Evolution for $12,000 to provide group and one-on-one coaching to individuals interested in small-scale development. This leaves a substantial balance in the fund for related work. Dubuque Main Street has a grant program, a swap grant, that provides matching funds to storefront redevelopment projects, up to $10,000 per project, covering costs associated with interior remodels or renovations. The initial funding came from county ARPA funds that were awarded to Dubuque Main Street in 2022. To date, the program has supported 13 projects, with $130,000 leveraging over $1.2 million of other private and public funds. The program is having a 10-to-1 impact on these projects. In the 2025 round, Dubuque Main Street received 12 applications for the remaining funds, demonstrating a significant need and desire for these funds by the private sector. This is the type of the program that the City Economic Development Office would propose to undertake. To avoid duplication of services, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is proposing that we provide funding to Dubuque Main Street to continue its swap grant program, which has recently depleted its program funds, only able to fund three of the recent 12 Jill Connors believes funding for five projects at $50,000 and a 20% administrative fee of $10,000 is appropriate at this time to be reevaluated at a future date to consider additional funding. This aligns with the City Council's 2025-2027 high priority of continued implementation of Central Avenue revitalization plan, and we will require Dubuque Main Street to award additional points to projects along the Central Avenue corridor when scoring applications. There is no budget impact to the city of Dubuque as funds have already been allocated for this purpose, with an adequate balance in the fund to support this request. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request, Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Jill, can I ask you to, to come up on this one? I, I think this, the memo was great, and I think explains quite a bit. There's a larger vision here that you have as an economic development department, and I think it fits with some of the, the events you've been having lately in this small development focus. I just, I'd like to give you an opportunity to fill that out, fill that picture out a little bit for us, so we can understand it a little better.
Yeah, thanks. Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. We, as part of a CIP that got approved in the budget process for FY '25, there was $150,000 that was set aside to address incremental development, which is small-scale development, which you saw tonight and, and, and mentioned, hey, these are three small projects that we're approving, but it really adds to the whole. You know, it's not 200 apartments at a crack, it's, you know, three here, 12 there, et cetera. So that's the purpose, that's what we're trying to encourage here. And what we have found is that, you know, there's not always the same level of sophistication in developers of these smaller projects. So what are the systems that we can put into place to help them? So one of the ways that they can be helped is with grants, you know, but the, the, the larger developers, they take advantage of those as well. But then, if I'm just starting, I've just bought a building, I don't even know how to get off a square one, what do I do? Who do I talk to? That kind of a thing. So we've brought in Neighborhood Evolution, and Monte Anderson was here a couple of weeks ago. You met him at the dinner and got to say some opening remarks at the lunch in the next day. And he's here to, to teach us and to do some ongoing training over the next year. So we've taken some of that $150,000 to use toward purchasing his time, contracting with him, to do one-on-one and group coaching for developers in Dubuque who want to start this. And so that's part of the vision, is to have these, these one-on-one and, and group opportunities for small developers to get their, together and really learn, what can I do? How, how do we get from step one to step two? And he's got a 12-step program that he talks about and having these support groups, he calls them, of developers getting together. And it's kind of a networking and mentoring type of opportunity for those who have already done projects, to then talk to folks who are new to the game. So that's part of it, is, is that. And then this is another piece to that puzzle, which is, how do we implement, you know, and get those projects going financially? So there's the coaching part, and then there's this financial assistance part, adding to a grant program that already exists, has the framework built, so we're not creating another grant program in-house. We're using one that's already established, they already know how to run it, they've got the committee in place, the staffing, et cetera. So we're already, excuse me, using that program and just putting funding into it.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It's super helpful.
I feel like I've not landed the plane very quickly.
No, no, that, that's a super helpful explanation of kind of the bigger picture of what we're looking at here. And I think what you said there at the end about this specific item makes a ton of sense to me. Why rebuild something that already exists? This is a, this is a great example of collaborating rather than overlapping. And, and I think that that's important, that we're looking at it that way. So, so thank you. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
So, thank you. Now for the basics. What is a swap grant? What is SWAP? Does it stand for something?
You know, I don't believe so. That was negotiated between David Barba's predecessor and the folks over at the county. I was not part of that conversation. I, I don't know how they landed on that.
Maybe David knows.
Honestly.
Come on up, David. If you want to answer that question, yeah, please. We appreciate that.
Thank you for the question. So we were anticipating this question, didn't have an answer for it until just a few days ago. We were calling it the Space and Workplace Activation Program. The swap name was previously created by the county, but we, we've kind, it's, it's caught on. People know about the swap grant, and so we're keeping the name, but we've, we've made an acronym that, that fits to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm glad you're using swap. So, so Mr. Van Milligan mentioned that there's no new monies, but there, I'm just looking at, what is the source of this swap grant funding? Is it general tax funds or were there grants or? I mean, my understanding is the city of Dubuque grants money to Main Street, and, and then Main Street grants these awardees.
Right.
So what is the original source of the money?
I believe that's greater downtown to funding for the CIP.
Okay, so, so very similar to what earlier they talked about those.
Yep, same funding source, yep.
Right, okay. So, thank you very much. And then it's, you're recommending $300,000 altogether, right? You have five projects at 50,000.
No, 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 sorry. Five, 50,000 is five projects. So 10,000 per project, similar to other grants that come out of.
So we don't do the 50,000, we just do the 10, the 20%?
50 total, yep, for five projects.
Okay, that, that explains things. So I was just wondering if we're expanding this or, or what the situation was. So thank you for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones?
Well, thanks for the innovative approach. What a great idea to let someone that's already doing the work, do the work. And their track record is pretty impressive, so why not partner there and get a little bit, a little bit of work off of your plate and onto theirs.
Yep.
Plus, it's the right thing to do. It just makes sense.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Well, and final thing I'll add, because we didn't get a chance to talk about it during public input, but David's, Mr. Barba's comments during public input about the progress that we're seeing at Dubuque Main Street. Appreciate that insight, because I think it's helpful to know that not only are we talking about collaborating with an organization that has a good history, but is currently working very hard to be more fiscally responsible and also increasing your attendance and just general action at all kinds of events. And for those of us that have attended those events, we've seen it. We can see the difference this year. So I'm very excited about that, just as an organization for you, but then to be collaborating in this way and, and continue to, to work together to make these kinds of things possible. It's really, it continues on to be an exciting time for all of us. Okay?
Thanks.
All right. Seeing nothing further here. Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. And David, thank you. The motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is quarterly update on new housing projects video.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and watch the video. Second?
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Farber. We can roll the video, please, Eric. Thanks to our communications department for putting that together as they do, quarterly. You know, it's interesting, we were driving the other day, and it'd been a little while since my wife had been over on Cedar Cross Road, and we were coming around the corner, and she had an audible gasp when we got to the Cedar Lake Apartments, because she had never seen them there before, and they were just kind of out of the ground all of a sudden. And it, you have that feeling in a lot of places right now in Dubuque. I'm also noticing it's harder and harder to drive certain places, especially downtown, because, and it's not because of roadwork, it's because of housing work, actually. So it's, as we've talked about all night, I think this is a major success story for us. I think we're, we're doing a great job as a community, getting this housing built for people, and it's going to be a really exciting thing to see in a few years here. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, watch the video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next are councilmember reports.
Report away, council.
A few of these things most of us were at. Talk a little bit about some of the ones that we weren't all at. I belong to the Dubuque Area Retired School Personnel Association, which is called DARSA. And that's why I spelled it out, because nobody would, would understand what that is. But our meeting this month featured a presentation on the school referendum. And I'd urge anybody in the community to go to the Dubuque Community School District website and the frequently asked questions section about that, and learn what's really going on there and, and why they believe that it's a necessary step forward for Dubuque. I was, I was certainly impressed with it, with the level of consideration that's gone into the recommendation that they take a referendum. And I look forward to, to voting on that in just a couple of weeks. And we'll be voting on some other things there, too. We were all aware of the League Forum on the 14th, the Crescent Ribbon Cutting, and the Invision unveiling on the 16th. Talk about a couple of notable deaths in the community. Dave Beidler was a second-generation operator of Beidler Towing and kind of built it into the, his brother Dennis is running it now. But Dave was one of the early pioneers in, in making it a little bit more customer-friendly and less scary for people that bring crashes. There was always a, a human side that we hadn't seen from some of the towing operators showing up when your, your car's wrecked, maybe you're injured, maybe you've got a family injured, injured. But Dave passed this week, and, and the community will miss him. And speaking of Dave's, had a guy for state and local government at University of Dubuque back in 1972. And most of you knew him in one manner or another. He sat over there and ran the league's candidate forums a number of years. Dave Roberts passed about a month ago, and his funeral was this Saturday in Dubuque. Dave is one of the reasons that I'm sitting here today. He inspired me that elective service was honorable, that it mattered to people, and that there are a lot of views out there, and that organizations like the Dubuque City Council filter them into policy through good work and good actions. So I'm proud to be sitting here. And thank you, Dave, for helping me get here.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. You can probably imagine that fall is tree planting time. So on October 11th, the Dubuque Trees Forever Volunteers helped plant trees for the branching out Dubuque program. And the next opportunity is this Saturday, October 25th, so there's still time to sign up. On October 9th, I had 37 members of the UD volleyball team and coaches come to do fall preparation and cleanup at the orchard. Thank you, everyone. They did a super job. And lastly, I just want to remind you to come to the State of Maine Awards this Thursday, October 23rd. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. I'll add, I was walking through a neighborhood earlier this week, and I stopped and looked over, and I said, oh, you're from AmeriCorps. What are you doing? And they said, planting trees. So thought of you immediately. Ms. Farber?
Yes. I'd like to give a shout out on October 16th to the Telegraph Herald for their eighth annual salute to women award ceremonies. And the winners were Abby Colvin, Deb Sigworth, Megan Feldpouch, and Debbie Butler was Woman of the Year. And it was a roomful of over 200. And I was very honored to be the keynote speaker, to encourage and discuss leadership styles and how it evolves and grows as one's profession life does as well. And then also that night, I attended the first chamber music concert by the DSO with the very well-known cellist Zul Bailey, who was amongst the five, actually, the quartet became five, with two cellists. And then next year, there will be a concert, a symphony for cello, basically created by Michael Gilbertson, who's from Dubuque. So a shout out to Michael. And Zul Bailey will be his artist for that program. So that was really fun to meet with him and to see that in action. And then on behalf of the city, just wanted to remind everybody that I'm still attending the ITC meetings, the technology meetings for the League of Cities. We had our last virtual, and we will have our final meeting in November at the League of Cities Summit in Salt Lake City. And I'm actually a moderator at one of those sessions. And it'll be about data centers. Imagine that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Mr. Sprank?
Thank you. Since the last time we met, a number of things. On the 11th, volunteered at the Labor Harvest Food Giveaway. That was actually one of our busiest Saturdays that we had in a number of months, actually. And then later that day, would stop by the Latinx Festival, which was just a wonderful event downtown. So that was great. The following, on the 14th, was the League Women Voters that I participated in. Then on the 16th, had a very busy evening between the dental clinic opening at Crescent, which was just phenomenal for my neighborhood to see that. And then, of course, the, the whole 302030 project, that all releasing that information was really good to hear about the future, and ideas that people wanted to come up with. And then this weekend, our police department, there's a special, there's a division just for women in law enforcement where they did a fundraiser. So that was a fun evening to, had some really good food out of town. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel?
So Mr. Zul Bailey actually came and performed at my daughter's orchestra during the day. And at the end of it, she said, Mom, there was a cellist that came and performed, and I've never seen anyone play the cello like that. And so I just want to thank Dubuque Symphony Orchestra for integrating those amazing musicians who come to our city and bring them in to expose our children to some really fantastic professional, professional music. I just wanted to mention also the Latinx Fest, or Latinx Fiesta, October 11th, at the same time, the grand opening of Dubuque Museum of Art, which is breathtaking and exciting, not only for that space, but for what's to come.
Mr. Resnick?
Very, very briefly, I've been to many events, but the one I'd like to comment on tonight is just something that we're all able to do at this, my favorite time of year with all these, you know, such a wonderful area for, for visuals. But, you know, I went with my family up to Bright Box in Bald Town. And we're not just Dubuque here, we're the entire area. I recommend that people, in this divisive times, and we're all crabby about something, when you get out and you meet nice people in beautiful places, and you, and you realize, we're so lucky to be living here at this time, making things happen, and just meeting some great people. I just recommend that as a fall activity for people, especially in the coming month here. And, and take a breath and, and look at our entire area as a community of people who care about the community and care about each other, and get out and see some amazing views, and maybe head up to Bright Box for some amazing cooking. So just my point of view. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I appreciate that. It's actually the thing that I was going to mention, too, just this idea of amazing people who care for each other and are good for each other. You know, I was just blown away by the Latinx Fiesta this year. It's so much bigger than when it started a few years ago. And I, I don't know if we've, and I know you've heard me say this before about other events. I mean, Pride was the same in June. It started very small in a parking lot. Actually, it started inside, I'm pretty sure, in the MFC. Most of these started just inside in the MFC, and they grew into the parking lot outside the MFC, and then needed to find a new home. And the Latinx Fiesta's new home is smack in the middle of the Millwork District, right at that great intersection there at, at 10th and Washington. And I was just sort of, I couldn't stop smiling during that day. It was one of those days where, first of all, it was just a beautiful day, and the food was phenomenal. And everybody was having such a good time. And it, I made the comments when I was there that, you know, this wasn't just a celebration of, of Latin culture in Dubuque. This is a celebration of Dubuque culture. And I love that about all of these events. I love that we're just celebrating each other so much and having these many, many opportunities to do it. So I hope we continue to, to go on that road, and I think we will. I think we will be celebrating each other in that way. All right. Well, before we all leave to celebrate, we have a closed session. So take a motion here. Mr. Jones?
I move that the city council go to closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and potential purchases of the real estate.
Second?
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney of the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Karen Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye. Sorry.
Jones?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. I don't know what I was doing there. Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.